Are you ready to go?
Yes.
I'm sorry, the call to order this meeting of the design review board for the city of Litchfield Park. Would everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under one indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Before we start on our items on the agenda, we have a call to the community for anyone who wishes to address this board. Like anything that's not on the agenda this evening. Is there any requests to speak? No, okay, moving forward. Um, the first is approval of the minutes from the January fourth regular meeting. Make it one into approve. Much to approve.
Oh, I'll approve.
Second and second. Um, any discussion corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Disagreed.
And, uh, and it be mono, mono elm wireless facility. And we'll have the staff present this and then that applicant can add to the information and be available for questions.
Great, thank you Chair, good evening. Members of the design review board, so we've got a number of items for you. The first one is going to be hopefully the last, last time the applicant needs to be here for a public process for a mono elm facility located at one two four oh one West Camelback Road. So Coal Creek Consulting is the applicant representing T-Mobile. This is what's known as a WCF or Wireless Communication Facility. It's in the lone industrial property that we have in Litchfield Park. It's Monument Point, which is zoned I or general industrial. Board should be familiar with the location. It's the southwest corner of Camelback in El Mirage Road. And it's surrounded by the county. We'll show you some maps in just a moment. Little bit of background on how we got here regarding wireless communication facilities. So last year, um, we had identified that, um, there was an omission in our zoning code where we did not allow wireless facilities in industrial districts. So we went through what's called a text amendment through P and Z and city council. And at their meeting on April nineteenth of last year, the city council approved a text amendment, which allows wireless facilities in the I district. Uh, the text amendment, basically it was a very simple amendment allowing these types of facilities in the industrial district subject to a use permit. Fast forward through the summer on August eighth, some of you that are on P and Z might remember that at the August eighth, twenty twenty-three P and Z meeting, the use permit was approved for this particular facility. And the drawings that are part of the DRB package were included in the use permit package. I mentioned before, this is the only industrial property in, in Litchfield Park. Uh, the facility itself is about sixty-five feet in height. It's disguised as a mono elm or elm tree known as a mono elm. In other cities, uh, you might see a monopalm, a palm, faux palm tree. In other climates, you might see a pine tree uh, or different locations that I can think of in metro Phoenix that have mono pines. The ground mounted mechanical equipment that are required to power and operate the wireless facility will be an enclosed compound with a decorative wall. This is a vicinity map, so the dark gray or purple is actually in the city limits. You can see properties to the north and the east are in the county. And the site itself is part of a larger parcel. Coal Creek will just be leasing a small portion of that particular lot in Monument, Monument Point. I'll get to that in a moment. Here's an aerial photo, so the so-called build the rent complex in the county north of Camelback is up in this area here. And then the, there's some sand and gravel operations on the east side of El Mirage Road that are in the county. You can see the, the, they're basically mining for aggregates. The site itself, we have a site plan. Um, it's kind of hard to read. This is a topographic survey. They go, I'll fast forward to the site plan, so I'm going to toggle back and forth. The, the building outline to the north is a self-storage facility that is partly obscured by the, the red arrow. So the wireless facility would be, the last time I tried to use my pointer on that screen, for some reason it doesn't work. So the, the mono elm would be in the, the dark location just west of El Mirage Road. And then it would be somewhat concealed by the self-storage facility to the north. This is a, what we had presented to P and Z back in August. So it's, uh, it's got the, the main structure and the applicant can do a better job than I can of describing some of the components of the actual facility, but it'll be disguised with leaves and branches into, into an elm tree. A couple of points, if, if and when it's constructed, it'll, the facility will provide two things uh, for this part of Litchfield Park. One, it'll provide additional wireless capacity for nearby residents and business owners. And secondly, it will improve wireless service as well in this portion of the city. It will eliminate a gap in service for Litchfield Park. We've seen some mapping. Um, and if, if you look at the mapping for this area in terms of wireless coverage, there definitely is a gap here. In conclusion, uh, staff finds proposed design is appropriate for this industrial area and we recommend approval of the application subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant. Uh, no stipulations on this one. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions and again, the applicant can get up to the podium and provide further detail if needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just say your name for us for the record.
Yes, uh, thank you Chair, members of the board, council member. My name is Declan Murphy, representing T-Mobile eighty-two, eighty-three in our town, Roden's Castle. Um, I don't have much to add to Mr. Fox's presentation, but I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. Um, just to say that there is a gap in service that we're trying to address for T-Mobile. And that's the, the primary reason we're here. And, um, what I would say is, um, I, I personally have been working on wireless sites for about two years here in Arizona. So we kind of pride ourselves in, in being a good partner with the, not just the carriers, but with the municipalities and neighbors. So, um, we choose this property because it's an industrial property. And just to give you some background, most jurisdictions with industrial property for a wireless site would be the, the preferred, um, location would be typically by right. And so, but it's not a big deal to, to go through the process. And obviously the text amendment was necessary to allow it. But from our perspective, keeping as far away from residential was our priority, which is why this makes sense. Um, the other thing I would say, um, we chose on this type of site, this Manuel, uh, because, um, it can accommodate, accommodate multiple carriers. So for now it's T-Mobile, but if Verizon or AT&amp;T needed to address issues in that area, you know, the site would accommodate, you know, three carriers. So it just makes sense from the, uh, infrastructure standpoint and from a municipal standpoint to, if you're going to build something, um, have it multi, multi-carrier. So anyhow, with that, I would be happy answering any question you might have.
Any questions, concerns from the board members?
So does that mean that the palm does not do, handle multiple carriers? I'm just kind of curious like if it.
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. Um, there, there's a lot of palms throughout the valley and, uh, you know, they've been around for, you know, maybe ten plus years. And there's a couple of things. Number one, um, most of them look terrible at this point because they don't hold up to the UV and wind and, you know, once they lose their branches, there's, I mean, it's up to each municipality to ensure that their, you know, most municipalities require a minimum, uh, front count. And if you drive through Phoenix, even I drove through, uh, I drove over from Phoenix and on Thomas Road, for example, and some of them are embarrassing how bad they look at this stage. But the other thing, uh, aside from the aesthetics, which doesn't really hold up, since they were introduced, um, with technology changes, antennas have gotten larger. And that's really the primary reason is that the fronds don't really conceal the equipment. So it kind of looks like a palm tree, but you know, it's obvious that with bigger and larger antennas. And the other thing that's happened is that with five G and technology changes, it's required that the radio, the radios be, be close to the antenna, which wasn't the case years ago. So you have more equipment on the tower. It's more difficult to hide and really doesn't aesthetically, it doesn't really do what it's intended to do. Whereas a mono elm like this, we can, we can conceal the equipment really well. We can dictate the branch color, the branch density, the bark color of the tree. And also we can put a sock on the antenna, which is basically a cover that has leaves attached. So the finished product is really good, um, aesthetically will hold up better and will accommodate multiple carriers. There are some attempts to put second carriers on these monopoms and there's a few that you can see. And it's just, it, it defeats the whole purpose because now it looks, it doesn't look like a palm tree anymore when you put the second row of antennas on there. So that's kind of the, the, the driving factor here is, it's going to look better. Uh, the concealment is better and it can accommodate more than one carrier. So that's, uh, that's the rationale.
Uh, I recall us talking about maybe even doing one that doesn't look like a tree. Didn't we talk about that? Because we almost, was that in P and Z maybe? Oh, was that in P and Z?
It was a P and Z.
Okay.
This is the first time it's been to the designer.
Okay, um. I, do you have a, what, what this looks like in real life or like a, like a true example?
If you can visualize the, a steel pole without the branches, that's essentially the.
No, what, what the tree would look like or the.
Yes, I provided a photo send and.
It's not in the PowerPoint. If you want me to pull it up, it would take me a couple of minutes to find it.
Yeah. Um, I can pull up a copy here, but, um, yeah.
Well, I guess I'll just, I'll bring that up to you guys. And in P and Z, we were discussing that maybe not having it look like a tree would be better in this, uh, application in the industrial.
This.
Yes, alright, that's more of a mono, mono pine.
Oh, I, okay.
David, do you recall that too?
I do, yeah. Ultimately, what was in front of us was, was approved. Which one of my questions was, seemed like we're duplicating our previous. It just seems odd, normally things don't, a month later come back to a different, different border. But anyway, my recollection was there was some discussion, one of the commissioners who, for his civilian job works with one of the SRP or one of the irrigation districts was questioning and just not having it all, but which he said they did not, where they are, there isn't anybody around to complain really, so.
I'm not going to review, but that's the actual simulation of the location next to the castle.
Um, the, the, to be frank, these look really good and, um, most people will drive by it, not like a mono palm where you, you know, it's like a self-care. But the concealment on these is good and we do a lot of these and we're doing a lot of them all over the state. And it just requires putting in a bit of effort into the right color of the branch density and the antenna socks are very important. So the finished product is really good, whether it's one carrier or three carriers on there, it's, it's actually, um, the out, the, the, the result, the end result is quite good.
Any other questions, concerns? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion. And staff is not requiring any stipulations, correct? So, no, I will, I will move that, uh, we approve as presented by the applicant.
Second.
A motion, a second and further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Um, it's got a request for a new covered patio. I have the address on the agenda.
Two seventy-one Bahia Lane East. It's up on the screen.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you Chair, members of the design review board. This is a residential, uh, application. It's located at two seventy-one Bahia, uh, easy for me to say Bahia Lane East. The applicant is requesting DRB approval for a fifteen by fifteen covered patio on an existing townhome. New patio will be about two hundred and twenty-five square feet and would be located on the front side of the home facing Bahia Lane. According to county records, the house was built in nineteen seventy-two. The main residence is about sixteen hundred and thirty-nine square feet. Again, the new addition would be two hundred and twenty-five square feet. The property is located in the Litchfield Park subdivision, number fifteen B, unit two. It is lot number two sixty-seven and is zoned RC or residential cluster. On the development standards, front yard setback in this neighborhood is ten feet. Uh, proposed patio will meet the setback. Uh, we do allow overhangs into the setback, so they're proposing three feet. Lot coverage is usually a concern of DRB in, uh, this neighborhood, sixty percent is allowed. And if the patio cover is approved, it would bring the lot coverage up to ten percent less, so about fifty point oh seven percent. This is a vicinity map, so it's just northeast of Tierra Verde Lake. So, uh, for context purposes, we're north of Indian School Road, east of Old Litchfield Road. And the site is on the east side of the street. Here's an aerial photograph, it's the third lot in north of the lake. Here's a plot plan, the gray area that's crosshatched, that would be the patio cover on the, what would be the west elevation or the west facade of the house. Here's a layout, alumna wood is a pretty common, uh, building material for this type of application. The established character of the neighborhood provides a mix of both parapet walls, uh, vertical, uh, stucco walls, uh, or a mantar roof with tile.
I mean, stop, uh, yeah, said privacy panel. What is that? Is, is that a vertical, like semi-wall? You see, um.
I'm going to defer that to the applicant when I'm done, if that's okay. This is a front elevation. So this is facing east, uh, the west facade of the house is looking at you. In conclusion, the proposed patio cover will provide shade to the west facade of, of the house. You might recall that you approved a very similar application Edgar Jan, the last time you met was on January fourth. That, um, patio cover, there was a little bit of a discussion with DRB. I'm going to go back to the elevation where a board member, Charnetsky and, uh, council member Romack at the time were asking, was there going to be any relief between the top of the parapet and the top of the patio cover? And, uh, I think the stipulation that was agreed to is that we would, staff would work with the applicant and provide some kind of an offset. I did go off the site a few hours ago. Um, the patio cover that was approved north of this lot, about three lots north, is under construction and looks good. And this would be similar concept to what DRB approved back in January. We are recommending approval, um, again, just subject to exhibits provided by the applicant. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't know if we have the applicant here tonight. I can't tell, Daniel's not here. I don't know if the applicant is.
Is the owner or, or contractor here for this project? Um, that was, my only concern is what is the privacy panel? What does it look like? Um, if it's a solid metal thing, I'm like, I don't think that'll go with the neighborhood. Um, so I'd kind of like to know what that is before we approve it. And then also, um, we had trouble with one of these projects on another a while back where there it technically didn't overhang the wall, there was a property line, but the other one, the other owner thought that it did or there was, didn't like it. Um, so that was the other concern I have is that this is right on the property line and, um.
And also if that one was cantelevered, so I was, I was also curious about like, what are the, what is the ruling on that? Cause I mean, this one you're saying overhang is okay, so just like where is.
This is a zero, right, that's a good question, thank you, through the chair, uh, with, um, DRB, the, this is a zero lot line development. I think what's being referenced is last summer, we had a variance application that some of you on the board of adjustment heard a case where, uh, there was a, not, not quite like this, but a, this type of patio cover. Somebody had built a patio cover that definitely did overlap into the adjacent neighbor's lot. Um, the board of adjustment, we were recommending denial, staff was, the board denied it. And literally within a few days, the owner, I don't remember which street it was on, uh, that patio cover that was not approved was removed. And it was a bit of an emotional hearing with, uh, that particular, um, situation. This one's a little bit different because it's a zero lot line development.
It, I mean, there, it's just, it's tight quarters there, so.
Yes.
And, but everyone's had their opportunity to object if they wanted to, okay. But I, I would like to, um, put this, uh, for, uh, carry this one forward to our next meeting if someone like to make that motion for that, I just want to know what that is before.
I agree, I'll make a motion to, um, to, to the next meeting. While the applicant can be available to answer your question.
Okay, we have a motion to continue to the next. And a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is continued. Thank you, um, let's see, next step is a, an addition at three, three one five West Cardano Circle.
Okay, thank you Chair, this is another residential project, three fifteen West Cardano Circle. The applicant's requesting DRB approval to construct room additions to the rear of an existing home. The property is located in the Litchfield Park subdivision, number sixteen. It is lot number sixteen and it's zoned R one fifteen. The lot's approximately nine hundred and fifty, nine thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. The house itself is roughly sixteen hundred and sixty-six square feet. The additions would be attached to the existing home and will consist of nine hundred and thirteen square feet of new livable area and a new covered patio of three hundred and seventeen square feet. According to county records, the house was built in nineteen seventy-six. The architectural character, building materials, single-story home, masonry finish, it's got a little bit of a varied roof line on the garage with an asphalt shingle roof. Here's a map, so provide some context. This is south of Wiglon Boulevard, just west of, you can see Tierra Verde Lake. And the site is on a cul-de-sac on the east side of, uh, Litchfield Road. Aerial photograph, you can get, see the lake again, and so it's just south of the building that we're meeting in tonight. Here's a plot plan, very nicely done. The dark gray areas are the, uh, areas that are proposed to be expanded onto, kind of hard to read. This is a floor plan, so, uh, there's two uh, appendages, if you will, that are, um, wanting to get built on the south side of the, uh, the house. The one at the southwest corner is an additional bedroom and bathroom. The, uh, area on the southeast corner is a new, uh, living area, looks like a bedroom, another bathroom, walk-in closet. And again, both are on the backside of the house. Here's some building elevations, um, so a, a lot of, uh, improvements are proposed. You can see, uh, all four sides of the intersection, intersection of the building elevations. These are some existing photos of the house. It looks like it's vacant now. I, I visited the site earlier today and it's, it's, uh, it's got a dumpster, roll-off dumpster in the driveway and it looks like there's some demolition work that's taking place. Our building official balled me a couple hours, he's been working with the owner on, uh, plan review and just getting ready for, uh, the plans to come in, uh, should DRB approve the project. In, uh, conclusion and staff recommendation, proposed remodel would introduce a couple of new elements to the house, some decorative wood accents. I said of the existing garage door, you can see it in the upper left-hand corner. And then that would be replaced with a more modern garage door. The room additions would utilize, uh, matching materials to the, to the main part of the house. And we think would be a compliment to the neighborhood and, uh, the house in general. With that, staff recommends approval of the application and subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant.
Is the applicant or building? Do you have anything to add to this stuff? Okay, does anyone have questions for the staff or for the applicant?
I have a question, is the ridge height increasing? The overall ridge height is, it kind of looks to me from the elevations that maybe the addition is at a higher, it's going to be higher ceiling height, so maybe the ridge height is.
It will be same ridge height, no.
Oh, so that's actually existing, that's the highest right now?
The highest moving distance.
I think it looks good. I, I had one thing more on the site and PowerPoint is that it's very close to the existing swimming pool. And there's some structural considerations, all right, that's not our job, but, um, just so you know, there might be some little extra engineering in the foundation around that area. Okay.
Yeah, there's a couple, I mean, both of the expansions come, especially on the, um, I don't know what my directions are on, but.
Correctly, uh, on that corner is over ten feet on the side to the pool.
Okay, it looks really close there. Okay. Okay, it doesn't affect the design, I think the design looks good, I would say that, just to, for your issue, keep an eye on that. Um, anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I, I move we, uh, approve the application for the addition at three one five, whoops, is that right, three one five West, for the circle.
A motion and second for the discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you. Yeah, excellent.
Chair.
Yeah.
I just, or I think, for the best interest, I think I should, uh, I think there's a conflict of interest for me on this one, I'm just not going to vote.
Okay.
One, history on it, so.
Okay, so, um, this is for request for a new garage covered in tree and remodel located at four sixty-five East Estero. Estero Lane. Okay.
Thank you Chair. Thank you, Chair. Uh, again, another residential project. This one. Is located at four sixty-five East Estero Lane. This is one, the applicant's requesting DRV approval for new garage. Covered entry and remodel to an existing home. The improvements are planned on the front and the side of the home, along with the rear of the. This site is located in Litchfield Park subdivision number eleven, unit two. And the property is lot number seventy-one. Little bit of background, property is approximately twenty-two thousand eighty-eight square feet and is zoned R one. The existing home is roughly twenty-six hundred square feet. And according to our records with Maricopa County, the house was built in nineteen seventy-eight. These are the planned improvements, so a new garage would be roughly six hundred and forty-seven square feet. This would be on the west side of the home. The existing garage would be converted into six hundred and four square feet of livable space. A new covered entry would be forty-five square feet. And then a livable addition of a hundred and thirteen square feet. Would be added near the front door facing Estero Lane. And again, we'll show you some exhibits in just a moment. The applicants also provide proposing a new covered patio of roughly eight hundred and seventy square feet. And a freestanding remodel of three hundred and thirty square feet. Uh, these two improvements are planned on the south side of the home. And in the rear yard respectively. I'm gonna. I realized with the PowerPoint, probably should have shown you some maps first off, and then I'll, I'll flip back to. Some of the other background information. So here's the area in blue. It's north of the Wigwam. Resort. So we're just below Camelback and east of Old Litchfield Road, which you can see is curving. Uh, just to the west of the site. Here's an aerial photo. You can see the, uh. The golf course, the resort is further south. Uh, development standards are being met on this one. Um, improvements are located within the building footprint of thirty-five feet. Front and rear and fifteen-foot side yards. The lot coverage in this district are one is thirty percent. And, uh, the applicants proposing with these improvements, twenty-seven point four percent. This is a plot plan, uh, very nicely done, professionally done, um. The outline of the garage, the existing garage is the lighter gray. And then, uh, the newer garage is the dark gray on the west side of the house. Floor plan's a little skewed. It should have been flipped around, um. By the applicant, so that north would be to the top. So if you can reorient yourself between the plot plan. Which is facing north. If you turn yourself around, you can see the swimming pool. Uh, at the top of the sheet, um, so you can see the garage. Conversion and then the new garage on this side will be on the right side of the sheet. Uh, building elevation is nicely done. Basically, the house is going to get wider. And the addition, the new garage is a front-facing. Uh, you can see that on the, um. The, uh, right side of the sheet or what would be the west elevation. Here's a exterior material palette, so. Uh, some new building materials are proposed, uh, new roof. Some stone accents, uh, some trim colors, uh, the applicant's proposing some metal awnings. Those are new. Uh, to the house. And I'll toggle back. The elevations and then. Applicant did a nice job with providing some renderings for DRB, so you can see. Uh, what the house would look like. This is on the back of the house, so the patio cover, the gabled roof is coming off the back. Or the south of the house. And then the. Remada you can see is up to the west of the pool, freestanding remada. In conclusion and recommendation, the construction materials include a. Stucco finish and concrete tile roof. The metal accents would be introduced as something new to the property. Uh, these would be the awnings that I mentioned. Uh, proposed additions will utilize matching materials and design, which we feel would complement. Uh, the neighborhood in general. Um, it's basically, it's a refresh. Of, of a house built about forty-six years ago. And detached remada would provide matching building materials to the home. You can see that here with the box columns. Uh, similar detailing with wood and same roof material, so. We are recommending approval of the application subject to the. Materials provided by the applicant. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do you want to give your name? Um, does anyone, excuse me, have any questions for staff or for the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question. Um. The existing house, I think, is slump block, isn't it? Correct? So they're stuck going over this slump block?
Yeah.
And then mostly, and then that's going to be probably like a whitish color. Is that?
Yeah.
I didn't see that.
It's a garden, yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, I saw the stone. I just, I didn't see any, like, material.
Oh, I know. I think we approved this some years ago.
At least the third time, yeah.
Yeah. Basically, seven, yeah.
The same designs.
I mean, it's similar, but I think it's even nicer.
Okay. Any other questions? Motion? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion to approve to, for staff stipulations? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Any opposed? All right, next step. You, the new restroom building?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, I'm getting. The, um, this is for a new bathroom building for the. Central park. On our new, uh, city center. Okay.
Thank you, Chair. So this is, uh, the latest. Addition, proposed addition to Litchfield Square. This is a. A mixed-use, um, project that you're all familiar with. We are the applicant, um. Uh, tonight and the owner, we're, as you know. Uh, we're developing Litchfield Square. Um, the square itself is located on the north side of. Wigwam Boulevard between Litchfield Road and Old Litchfield Road, and it goes up to Scout Park. And the Scout Lodge area. Uh, we are asking for DRV approval for, um, what's known as bathroom building number two. And before I came on board. Uh, the board approved the larger restroom building. This project, a little bit smaller bathroom. Same or similar, built same building materials, similar. Uh, similar design, just a smaller scale than what's going to be built up at the square. This bathroom's about four hundred and eighty-two square feet. Uh, includes men's and women's restrooms, a janitorial room. An electrical room and a drinking fountain. Restroom building one, uh, the larger building was approved by DRB back in twenty twenty-two. That one's located, uh, also in Litchfield Square Park, uh, further north along Village Parkway. Proposed building materials, uh, stucco finish, flat roof and a parapet. Steel frame accents and window surrounds are provided as well. Here's a vicinity map, so the parcel map, this is, uh, the actual lot that the park is being built on. Aerial photographs, a little bit out of date. Uh, if you were in the square today, they were actually laying sod in the park today. It looks great, so. They stopped in between, uh, periods of rain this morning as the storm went through, but. I was on site taking a look at it with our general contractor. This is a master plan of, I took this to RPG back in January, just to give them an update on the square. This is the park master plan, so provide some context. The North Street. Is Village Parkway. The east side of the park is Desert Avenue. The south side of the park is Honeysuckle Street. And the eat, the west property line is what would be. Uh, La Loma Avenue. And so. Wigwam Boulevard would be a lot of blocks south of here. The. I'm just going to point to this screen if the board doesn't mind. This is bathroom building one. Up here. Bathroom building two will be here. And the idea is that with the playground that's going to be installed. Uh, later this, uh, year. That the larger restroom, uh, would provide greater capacity for visitors. The second bathroom, that's the subject of the application tonight, would provide, uh. Ancillary restroom facilities. To that portion of the park. What surprised us when the park was being built, and I told this to. RPG a couple of months ago, is how big the park is. Now that the streets are all in, you can start to get a visual about the scale of the, of the park. Hard to read, and I'm, I only brought one copy and I'll explain this in a moment. So this is the floor plan. So two restroom, uh, buildings, uh, two restrooms, men's and women's. The electrical room and janitorial room are on the, the west side or the left side of the, the, the floor plan. These are the building elevations and what's being handed out is, uh, we were going to beat up on ourselves because we thought that the west elevation, which is this one. Was a little too plain, so the two doors would be. The. Uh, doors for the, and the janitorial room. We felt that facade, especially with it being. So visible to the park that it should be dressed up. We were going to recommend or are recommending approval of the application, but we were going to suggest stipulation one, that final design plans would include. Exposed steel framing above the two doors on the west elevation. We advised that to our designers last week. Uh, preparing for tonight and they produced that exhibit. We got that this morning. So if you want to take a look at what they're. Proposing, those are updated. Uh, exhibits, you can actually see they're, they're doing what we asked them to do on the, the west elevation.
The question, the, the two doors are so far to the edges and then. Sure, you've got windows that when the door swings, it basically blocks the window. If those are functional windows or just for show. And then, um, also leaves you know, you can't really use that wall for shelving or anything else, so. Not the D Y S to move the door. Closer plus aesthetically, it would look better on the outside.
Good.
That, I mean, that would be my recommendation for function and aesthetics.
I think it'd be nice to add a window where the door is and then with the doors both.
Put the doors closer together.
Then all, all sides have windows too. I think it's just.
Well, sure, actually, is that facing? Facing the street or is it?
I think it's facing that one, right?
And that kind of faces the park.
Yeah, I'll go back to the, so the, the blank. I'll just call it the blank facade, the west facade is right here. So the building's oriented east. So the. The side that we're concerned with, very high visibility of the park is the, I'll just call it the plain elevation. That's the one we want dressed up.
That, that, I think if you did that, it would help with the.
There's my architecture design. That won't charge you anything. Okay.
But that's not a good point, because I think there's going to have to be an overhang over those doors anyway, right? So, and that's not depicted.
Now you're adding a, an arm sort of thing over it too. That way, if you put the doors close together, it could shorten the arm.
Um, I have a question about the parapet because, uh, I'm assuming this is not an air-conditioned facility.
Correct.
So, I, I don't know, but it seems like kind of out of proportion, how, how, how high the parapet is compared to like the, the. Actual interior volume. Like, it seems kind of unnecessary and maybe that, to me, the proportions kind of look off on that. I feel like the perfect could be, maybe a little bit lower possibly. Unless it's like a functional.
We can look at that.
Give it some possibility of putting a solar panel or two, that so it's self-sustaining.
But I mean, it's, it's a pretty small footprint, so you want, you don't want the parapet shading this panel, so it's kind of, I don't know, I mean, it's just. Essentially something to look at. Things kind of, it seems like a small forehead to me right now.
I have another question too for you, John, are you? Are ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
I remember when we approved this in twenty-two, we, we brought the idea. I don't know what the right term is, like, unisex bathrooms? Was that a consideration here, instead of having a men's and women's to just max out how many?
Her family.
Family bathrooms, whatever.
Yeah, Chair, uh, Board Member O'Connor, that was discussed, we thought, with the scale of this building, that. Being smaller and secondary. To the primary building, that this was, um. Probably about as much as we could get out of the building. This does have the. The men's room is on the east side of the building. Uh, the women's restroom is on the west side. We, we can look at that. Um, we are in a little bit of a time crunch, but we can certainly look at that.
Is restroom, I forget, I'm sorry, does restroom number, number one incorporate that?
It has a, I believe it's on the plans, a family restroom.
So it is available somewhere.
Correct. That restroom, by the way, I know we're here to talk about restroom building two, but restroom building one. That is about ready to start construction, probably in the next couple of weeks.
And the other. Do you want to just approve with our notations or do you want to see it back?
I'm sent through. I don't, I don't have a problem.
It's already better this way, but it's, it's, it's my work. We need to staff to. Yeah, okay. So I want to attempt the, the motion. A second. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. It's all up to you, John.
Great. Thank you for the input.
The last thing, um, well, second, I'll think. A new dispensary. Uh, to one, two, three, oh, nine, West Camelback.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Members of the design review board, this is an industrial application. It's, uh, very close to the Mono Elm that you. Approved earlier tonight. This is a. A site located one, two, three, oh, nine, West Camelback Road. Uh, the applicant and their team are here tonight to answer any questions that might, uh, come up from the board tonight. So the application is for a new build, a new building. Uh, for a dispensary. This relocated, uh.
We are talking about marijuana.
That is correct.
Because I don't see that anywhere. So. I'm not opposed necessarily, but I'm just saying. You don't have that word gets out, the public, whatever part of them will be opposed to anything on that. When they see there was no mention of it here, they're going to assume it was done. When they see there was no mention of it here, they're gonna assume it was done, so. Just like I said, I'm just calling it a dispensary, let's call it what it is, it's marijuana dispensary.
Okay. Thank you Vice Chair. This is again in Monument Point, uh, located southwest corner, Camelback and El Mirage Road. The site would be located on the western portion of the Burger King, which consists of one parcel. Separate from the DRB application, uh, the applicant is working on what's known as a minor land division or MLD to actually create. A new lot or a new parcel for the dispensary. The newly created lot, if approved, would have street frontage on Camelback Road. The dispensary itself would be twenty-five hundred square feet, west of Burger King. Uh, the dispensary would provide the sale of medical marijuana and recreation marijuana products. Operation of the dispensary would comply with state and city regulations regarding marijuana products. Arizona voters on two occasions have approved. Uh, this industry, the first was for medical marijuana, I believe this in two thousand and seven. And the second time was, I believe, twenty sixteen or twenty. Eighteen or twenty twenty, I don't, I don't recall regarding the sale of recreational marijuana. This is a site that would meet our zoning requirements for dispensaries. Architectural design of the dispensary would include a stucco finish, stone veneer accents. We had asked the applicant a month or so ago. If they could try to tie in the building design with. The nearby Burger King to the east and then the Caliber Collision Building to the west. And they said they could do that. They're proposing some steel accents and steel trellis features uh, on the building to add some visual interest. Here's the site, so you can see, um, it's actually the uh. It, it's a good sized pad that Burger King is on. The self-storage facility that I mentioned on the Mono Elm, you can see it there. Toggle back and forth, so the, the Mono Elm is on the lot. South of the self-storage facility, so we're just north of the other application. Vehicle access would be provided from an existing driveway on Camelback. That driveway currently provides access to Burger King and other businesses on my, in Monument Point. Parking uh, for both the restaurant and the dispensary. Per our zoning code is forty-five spaces and the applicant's site plan provides for fifty-three. Our land development engineer has reviewed the, the project as has our building official, as well as uh, the planning department. Um, as part of this process through DRB. Um, the minor land division process, the applicant will have to. Show that the newly created parcel, that there's adequate drainage, parking, access, shared access. Um, stormwater retention, landscaping, as well as um, this industry requires a certain. Manner in which to dispose of byproducts, so um, they will demonstrate all that through uh, the permit process. Site plan's kind of busy and hard to read on the, on the plot plan. Or the PowerPoint slide. This is the floor plan, so it's basically, it's a rectangular building. These are uh. Two of the facades. These were the other two, so when the product first came in. A few months ago, we, we thought that uh, the building color scheme was different. We weren't real comfortable, there was a lot of black accents, we didn't really feel like that fit. Litchfield Park, I understand that might be the color scheme for. The, the provider, but we, we wanted it more in keeping with. The look of Monument Point, so the applicant came back and is proposing um. Some additional features that we asked for. We feel like the design, it uh, provides an architectural. Uh, theme consistent with Monument Point, with the two commercial buildings nearby. We are recommending approval of the application, uh, subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant. But also seven stipulations and for the record, I'll, I'll read all seven. Into the record, stipulation one would be that a minor land division application. Shall be completed prior to the issuance of building permits. Plat will require cross-access, shared parking, shared refuse and shared drainage. As deemed necessary at the time of review approval. Stipulation two would be final design plan shall demonstrate that shared access agreement. Shared parking agreement is provided with Jason Properties. Three final design plans. Shall demonstrate that adequate stormwater retention facilities and sanitation. Facilities are provided on site. Number four, this is from the uh, city engineer, precipitation for one hundred year. Six hour volume should, should be two point four eight inches, applicant use two point two five inches. This equates to about ten percent under their um, volume provided amounts. And will require more storage provided at the time of the permit plant's report. So, again, these are details that we would work out. Between the city engineer and the applicant going forward. Five is important to us, we, we want any exterior light fixtures uh, to match. Um, what's uh, those found on adjacent properties in Monument Point. Six, a detailed drainage report will be provided with final design plans, a plumber report's been provided. To the city engineer and then finally that if there are any. Additional decorative masonry screen walls, there is one on Camelback now. Um, if new walls are required for a reason that they would match those found on adjacent properties. And uh, the design will be required with final design plans, so. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have tonight.
The um, action present. You just, if you'll say your name for the record.
I will.
Do you have anything to add before we ask questions?
Uh, Chair, Vice Chair, Council Member, Board Members, Lindsay Shuby with the Law Firm of Gampage and Burnham. Forty North Central, Phoenix, Arizona, eight five zero zero four. So, thank you so much. I, I. Add that we uh, we're happy to be here. We look forward uh. To being the first dispensary in Litchfield Park and we are uh, in, we, we agree with all the stipulations. And respectfully request approval, but do stand for any questions with regard to the, to the design.
Thank you. Um, right away, a landscape plan?
Yes.
Not in our pocket or?
And we have a landscape architect here.
Did I, was it?
Yeah.
Did I miss it? Uh, there's a little bit in the site plan.
There's a little.
Yeah. Yeah, it's hard to read, um. Can we have Kimberly Horn get up to speak to that?
Yeah, if you, is there? You have to get a boat.
Evening. Uh, and board, uh, with Kimmy Horn and Associates, seven, seven, four, zero, North Sixteenth Street, Phoenix, Arizona, eight, five, zero, two, zero. All right, so I do have a copy of the landscape plan with me, preliminary landscape plan, I'd be happy to share that. Uh, but essentially, our approach is to maintain as much of the existing landscape as possible. So we're more or less just uh, updating and revitalizing the second half where the, the new building is going. Um, the overall plant palette is low water use, drought tolerant, kind of your standard desert native plant mix. Um, and we are providing some additional screen wall along Camelback. And just complied with the, any of the landscape comments that were provided during our first submittal.
Is, so you're. Last giving that was completed by Burger King and you're just clearing out enough for your building and then.
Correct, yeah. So much of the, the frontage along El Mirage Road and along Camelback Road. The majority of that is going to be protected in place. Um, there was a request for some additional landscape at the entry along Camelback. Uh, so we are addressing that and then elsewhere, uh, we're doing new retention basins, both above ground and underground. Uh, so we'll be landscaping those uh, to co-require requirements, uh, landscaping around the building. Um, I think it was mentioned earlier, there'll be some chalice features uh, on the building, so there'll be some vertical vines. Uh, vegetation as well.
Could you put some trees in that will make the mono elm less? That would be nice. Is there, is there a place for that? Any other questions?
I, I. Go ahead.
I have a quick question, just so I'm clear on what we're voting for. Is I was looking in the packet, it referenced that what was being asked for was a medical marijuana dispensary. Which would also sell recreational products. Now to me, is recreational products, is that different than a normal recreational marijuana business? In other words, I'm thinking of baked goods, some of these little things and to me, that sounds like a marijuana recreational product. Or in fact, is it both a medical marijuana dispensary and a recreation dispensary? As far as what you're asking.
Chair, uh, Chair, Vice Chair, uh, great question. So there are a hundred and sixty-nine. Uh, marijuana licenses in the state of Arizona. There are a hundred and thirty dual-use licenses. And with the dual-use license, those were the original licensees uh, that, that got a medical license. They have the uh, right and the obligation to sell both medical and recreational. Uh, my client, Story Cannabis, which one thing I do like, as you saw in the elevations, they have very tasteful signage. Um, if you didn't know what it was, you, you would not know what it is. But they, so there's, there's some recreational only, there's a few medical only, the medical only are in outside counties. Uh, not, there are none, no medical only in Maricopa County. Our client controls nine licenses. And we're not exactly sure which one will go here, uh, but yes, the, at, at a marijuana dispensary, a cannabis dispensary. You will find all sorts of different products, whether it's uh. And I, I do, I, I joke, I, I don't actually, I don't consume the product, so I represent a, a lot of people in the space. I know more about it than I ever thought I would know, but I'm more of a sparkling rosé kind of a gal, uh. And I've said that on the record in more jurisdictions. Anyway, uh, they do sell all sorts, so there is the, the traditional way to smoke the marijuana plant. Um, there, there, there are brownies, um, there are gummies. But I will say there are a lot of regulations in place as to advertising for children. Um, safe packaging, I've heard they're actually almost impossible for even adults to open. Uh, and there's also uh, uh, limitations on sales. So when you have a medical card, you are actually entitled to a greater amount of product at greater potency. At a recreational sale, if you don't have a medical card, it is less potency, um, and, and less product that you can walk out the door with.
Just to, just to follow up. Personally, you mentioned it was a traditional medical or traditional marijuana use. So is your, that you're calling for is ultimately you're looking for a dual license, is that what we're talking about? That will be, you'll have both applications.
Uh, uh, Chair, Vice Chair, your code allows for a dual licensee or an establishment only. Uh, tonight, the application that's in front of you is design review for the building. Your code allows for. A dispensary by right only in industrial zoning and frankly, this is the only spot in town. Uh, I've had multiple clients look at this site and, and you finally have someone here. So again, the law does require that every jurisdiction does allow for reasonable accommodations with zoning. Um, so again, what's before you tonight is, is simply the design review application. Because the, the dispensary is permitted by right, other jurisdictions have a use permit application. Or meta, uh, zoning clearance process, uh. But your, your code does allow for either one. At the end of the day. Uh, there are very few dispensaries in the state of Arizona. I think that's one thing that has made it such a safe and secure. Business, the, the city of uh, Phoenix does have annual reviews because they have a use permit process. And I will say, I'm in front of zoning hearing officers on a regular basis and uh, for every year, we pull police calls. Neighborhood services calls and the sites are posted and we have no issues. We have the planning director saying on the record. You know, and, and council members saying we should probably change the code, cause so, so again, I can, I can say with confidence. That I am in front of jurisdictions on a regular basis for dispensaries that have been operational for almost fifteen or sixteen years now and there's.
I get, I get all that. Over the billions, but I'm trying to get a definite answer on this. Is it a medical marijuana dispensary that has some products or is it effectively a dual? That you're, that ultimately you're asking for, that you'll be able to sell regular marijuana as well as cater to. Uh, people that are looking for medical marijuana as well as maybe these marijuana recreational products. So you're selling any and all, is what I'm saying.
Through the Chair, Vice Chair, at the end of the day, it's all the same product. And I would say recreational sales are now probably eighty percent of sales in the state. A lot of people did drop their medical card, um, because they don't wanna pay the fee of having a medical card. So it, it's all the same product, the difference is how much you can walk out with and whether you pay taxes on it. So the, the products are all the same, that frankly, the medical um, are greater potencies and greater quantities. But the, and, and I would say most cultivation and infusion facilities, and they're all local, everything has to be locally sourced in the state of Arizona. Um, normally are producing for the recreational market now with the lesser potencies. Because those are where the majority, I'd say eighty percent of the sales are coming from.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, bear with me, I got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Uh, first, John, the, can you just quickly go through what it takes to get the minor land division application completed?
Chair, uh. Board Member O'Connor, so the MLD process is a. Uh, administrative function that is managed by the city engineer. It. There was a recent MLD done just west of this site at Camelback for the Carl's Jr. site. And that was to create the, what became or has become the. Lot or take five, the automotive facility is under construction just east of Carl's Jr. So it's a technical review by the city engineer. He'll run it by planning and also the building official. It's basically, it's a document, it's an exhibit that um. Uh, once the city engineer signs off on it, he will advise the applicant. Basically, you're ready to go, he'll secure signatures. On the document itself and then the. Uh, MLD will get recorded with Maricopa County. So that they have a record, they'll, they'll create a new assessor's parcel number, because if you look at. We go back to the lot. That's one legal lot, that map is actually, I pulled it from the county assessor, so you can. That, that's one lot, so the MLD process, if approved, would. End up splitting that in two, if you will. And again, the administrative process.
Okay, so being that it's administrative, that's why you felt comfortable probably to bring this to us without it being approved yet?
Correct, okay, yeah.
Uh, and then as far as the signage, that meets all of our requirements with the city and or. The overall uh, zoning.
She's signage is a separate application.
That's a separate application. My member on Carl's Jr., we brought an application in front of DRB. And a few months ago, the signage is installed now and I, hopefully the board's comfortable with. When getting, getting approved, that is a separate application. We would make sure it meets all of our criteria. Size, um, dimensions, et cetera, bring that back as a separate application.
Okay, and then are there any limits to uh, words that can be put on? The, the signage?
This proposal is, is two words, story cannabis, stories, the, the operator.
Um, specific words. Yeah, I'm just kind of curious, like if there's any words that Twitter could not be used on that site.
Uh, I don't think there's a limitation on that. You might recall on the. I don't think there's a limitation on that, you might recall on the. On the Carl's Jr. signage, we staff was recommending that the board not approve what's known as a modifier. And you in particular, it it was, what was proposed is there charbroiled burgers. There was a a nice discussion with the board, the board didn't think having any modifiers as as part of the sign package. Was a problem, so you approved it, it's been installed and so that's a little bit different, I mean, it is. Additional signage that Carl's Jr. got, so we would review all of that as part of the sign package for story cannabis.
And is is story cannabis like the logo, is that their logo?
Through the Chair, correct, that is the logo. And and I would just say in terms of signage, think about the Reed v. Gilbert case. Unfortunately, jurisdictions have to be kind of content neutral in terms of what they can regulate. We absolutely have to meet all of the same science standards as as any other regulated business. But but the yeah, the story cannabis is the is a VBA, there'll be a different, the the license that will be placed here will have a different name to it. But that's that that's their trade name.
Okay, and the red is their logo?
Correct.
Okay. And then, I guess my big question here is, with this going in the industrial. Site, overall site, does that preclude or prohibit any future development by anybody like? Would a church now not be able to go there or a school or does anything get precluded now?
Correct, there are some separation requirements, as Lindsay noted, that if the the proposal, the use itself meets Arizona code.
I get that.
Right. Going back to when we first got the application or the first notion of a pre-application meeting. I believe is in September. We did in a planning did an analysis on is this. Land use even allowed, and so like I mentioned, the residential to the north in the county, that's actually zoned commercial. And so, the. If that was zoned residential, this use probably would not be allowed. So it it might preclude other businesses, like a school, for instance, from locating. This is a little deceiving, Monument Point itself is about forty acres, so it's twenty to forty acres. So it's it's a larger distance than maybe what it looks like on the. On the map, the residential to the west. Over here, the cursor doesn't really show it, but. That's in the county as well, if it ever gets annexed, it'll probably go into Avondale, but this meets all of our criteria.
But I guess it it could prohibit some uses in the future, it might.
Chair, pardon me, so I I would I would say it precludes another dispensary from going in within one thousand three hundred and twenty-five feet. Because that's a protected use to protected use, if a daycare. Public park, place of worship, school, that it is a protected use, it can choose to locate. Close to the dispensary, it then puts us as a legal non-conforming use, which is okay, because we're we were here first. So it doesn't preclude a protected use from coming in, it does preclude another dispensary. I mean, with this, it it basically precludes another dispensary in Litchfield Park, but. A different protected use could come in and then we couldn't make any changes or do anything to ours. So it's up to the protected use, if they want to come.
Because you're already there.
Because we're already there, they are welcome to come and then it creates a legal non-conforming use for us, but that's okay, because we're we were legal at once. Sorry, I'm playing lawyer for you.
Would that preclude the owners then to selling it to another dispenser if if one of the other daycares or something went in there?
Chair, no, it would, so once the use is established, again, zoning and the land use code just cares about the use, it doesn't care about the operator. So a different operator could come in, but another dispenser, we could not within one thousand three hundred and twenty-five feet of where we are located.
Okay, so let's get back on to the design part. If are there any, I'm just gonna understand that the signage is a different application process and we're not approving the signage. I would like to see at least city staff review the landscape, a final a final landscape plan. And just ensure that it's conforming with at least the what we approved for the Burger King area in terms of plant palette and that good city. And I don't know how many trees were required back then. That those are my only two no stipulations, so do any other? Let's see, I can make a motion or or do you have any other questions for the staff room? No?
I'll make a motion, just a moment, let me start by saying, I'm gonna, I'm going to move to approve. But I want to explain why I'm doing it, regardless of what I personally think about marijuana. The voters in their wisdom have twice approved it, city allows that site. Of the protected use that we can't do anything about, it's across the street from, I'm not sure if it's. Used to, I think it used to be a landfill for trash or tree cuttings or whatever, in any event. There's there's nobody on that side of the road that can complain, because whether it's whether it's a sand pit or what they're doing, it's not gonna. So if you're gonna have one, that's where it ought to be, so I don't have a problem with any of that. And my personal thoughts are a whole different deal, because we're only proving what what the buildings are going to look like and that. So with all of that said, I move that we approve subject to these seven. Stipulations that staff suggest.
And mine. Second, I agree, second, okay, any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Same.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a a staff report line for you today?
We do, thank you Chair, Board Members, so Maria. I want to thank her for helping me out, she's. Deputy City Clerk, if you come to council meetings, you'll see her sitting, sitting usually where she's sitting now. She explained, we've got some new things going on, the new monitors in this room, the ceiling fans are new, the lighting's new. The microphones, I think, are the biggest thing that's different than when we met last time. We've got a new microphone stand that I think replaces the old one, so hopefully the room's a little bit easier to. Conduct a meeting in, so I will tell you, Daniel Loftus is no longer with our with the city. So we wish him the best of luck. In whatever endeavors that he has, he's been was with us for about two years and we appreciate what he, I overlapped with them. What we brought the last year and a half, so appreciate what he worked on with you and other boards and commissions. So. So what happened there, I think I touched the. Yeah, not sure what I did there. So moving forward, you'll be working with with me on any DRB applications. I know some of you will see you next week with P and Z, same thing, I'll be the P and Z representative. And we'll figure out. For Tuesday night if Maria is gonna be with me or not, so that's the big staff for staff report on current events. I mentioned some things happening with Litchfield Square, the sod going into the park started today. They made a lot of progress this morning, bathroom building one that DRB approved back in twenty twenty-two. Will start construction, they've already laid it out in the park. And they will probably start doing what's called flatwork, grading, concrete work. Here pretty quick and then go vertical with stem walls in probably the next forty days, so good progress being made on the park. And that's our staff report for tonight.
Great, thank you, do any board members have any current events to speak on?
I just got a quick question, John, when the park's done, is it gonna be open? I forgot what what.
Yes, Chair, Board Member O'Connor, so the the plan is that the park would open roughly around Labor Day weekend. And then we would start moving our parks and recs, rec department would move the signature events over to Litchfield Square Park.
Is in the roads, will still be closed, but?
No, the roads would be open by then.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So park, roads, hall, grand opening, correct, got it.
I'd just like to make a few comments and just say thank you and welcome to, you know, thank you for letting me be on this committee. I received, I received exactly zero seconds of turnover from Councilman Romac, so I'm gonna do my best to just be quiet and. Respect what y'all do and I'm I'm happy offline to have any conversations with everybody to bring me up to speed. I wanted to make sure that you did get me on motion G as an abstain, thank you. But yeah, I'm a very interesting process tonight, looking forward to to working with with all of you on this. In my, what I would deem very limited. Almost fifteen months of city council experience, so process of elimination, so.
Glad to hear. Speaking of, you've got something to say though.
Yeah, no, I I just think, like I said, I'll need to get a little. There was a, there was a moment in time there during item G, I wanted to move to executive session, executive session, but I realized other than. Mr. Ledger here, we didn't have a lawyer here, we didn't have our city attorney, because there was there was about a thousand things I wanted to talk about, but no, I'm. Appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to be here and I think the. I I I did sit on planning and zoning for for three years and I know you're still sitting on there, you're still sitting, so it's. It's a, it's a great process, great to see this through, so thanks for the opportunity.
All right, thank you. Motion to Chair.
Salute.
Six, six red of the.